Good evening. Welcome to our interview tonight with Rebecca Viegas. The she is the incumbent and candidate for county council District Seven. Conducting our interviews tonight are Tanya Yamanaka and Kanani Enos. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. I first like to give a little information out about Houlipaq. Houlipaq is a group of grassroots community advocates, volunteering our time to Houlipaq. Many of us have witnessed during oral testimonies, the problem of being the minority voice, observing seated representatives voting against the Aina or the majority of testifiers. The majority rule currently allows the continuation of colonial structures, corporate rule, and methods over ike Hawaii for Aina and its people to thrive. We must collectively understand the individual power we carry as Hawaii Island residents by getting involved. Okay, Tanya, I think you're, I forget who's asking the first question. Is it Tanya?
No, Kanani.
There you go ahead, Kanani.
All right, aloha Rebecca. Um, so Rebecca, what's inspired you to run for office at this time? And could you please describe some of your core values? And how you would apply those values to Hawaii Island's future?
Sure. Well, the reason I originally ran for office was my mentor, who had served in county council and people that I had worked with in activist capacity for decades, came to me and asked me if I would be willing to run for office. And it came as a huge honor, but I wanted to go check with my community first. Because it's a huge responsibility. And I felt that I needed to have that support, obviously, not just in votes, but just in some of my own personal inventory and self-reflection on how I could serve and if this was the right role for me. And I was given that that kind of support. And so I did run for office. I am
Rebecca, your mic is breaking up a little. It kind of chop.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, it's much better.
Okay, great. My apologies about that. Technology is the best laid plans. Um, so going back to my values, uh, you know, honesty, integrity. And I feel like a value when serving in public office is not wanting the job more than your willingness to do the right thing. Because yeah, we can't please everybody. Um, and so it's it's silly to think you can, but when you need to make a decision that you know is going to anger some people or frustrate some people and they may not understand. I think it's really important for us to check into our na'au and that knowing inside of us and going back to when I sleep at night or if I'm on my deathbed, am I going to be okay with this? And you know, there have been times recently that even people that I'm always allied with, I've upset. But I also took the initiative and the responsibility to reach out to them immediately. And I think that the value of communication and taking that responsibility and then perseverance, taking it to the next level, going back, explaining, trying to solve and fix and connect and collaborate and clarify. I think that that is really important. I value humility. I value our community and my sense of purpose in service, in servant leadership as opposed to the prestige, power, and you know, and influence that so many think this job brings. It's actually a burden that I think it requires a level of strength and courage. And to tap into the wisdom of those around you. Because there's no way to know everything about every issue that comes at us in council. And we're there to make the best decisions possible with the information we have at the time. And so knowing where to go, to look for information and who you can go to. And that's when the value of community and kulianna and broader purpose, I think, provides. For me, it's provided grounding and some stability. And in my hardest moments, it's provided me with courage and the tenacity to run again for this fourth and final term, because I truly believe there is value in having served in this role for this amount of time. I think about how much more I know now than I did when I first began. And and that's just the case for anybody that gets into office, but I I also firmly believe that if you have a truly conscious, progressive, public servant in office, it is to the benefit of our community for that person to serve all four terms. And and the longevity of the potential of service in this in this role.
Thank you. Tanya, next question.
Yeah, Rebecca, what do you see as the most pressing topic facing your district? And what do you see doing about addressing that issue?
Okay, well, one of the joys of representing District Seven is I would say that I have the most urban core on the island. And with that, we're kind of a microcosm of the planet at large. And with that comes a lot of issues. I've got the wastewater treatment facility. And we're currently under consent decree and legal litigation from Earth Justice, which I'm actually grateful for, because it is requiring us as a county to stop passing the buck. And we have to come up with the solutions and we have to fix our wastewater. In alignment with that is the lack of any wastewater facilities or pipes. We're currently on just on cesspools for the last mile of Ali'i Drive, which is by Kahalou. And it is imperative that we get that sewed. We're just waiting for responses on the RFPs for the engineers to get that shovel ready. And I'm very hopeful working close with environmental management that once we get that, we can, we would have the funding sources available in order to get that sewed pronto. Um, we are obviously in a houseless crisis. Uh, I'm sorry, we are having a housing crisis, which also contributes to the challenges of the unhoused that are so prevalent on our streets in Kona. Some just unhoused, others suffering from mental health issues, substance abuse issues. Discovering through a lot of my work with some of the different service providers in Kona, the demographic of the unhoused is different than on the east side. We have really mostly what you're going to see in town are people that have flown here. And so, and many of them want to go home. And so, working with our houseless providers to get them the resources necessary to be able to return home and reconnect with families. The impacts that that has played in our public parks and our beach parks and our activity facilities, which we already don't have that many, has caused some big challenges, but working collaboratively with community policing, with parks and recreation, and with a number of our houseless service providers. We've been able to kind of thread this fine needle that's associated with the American Civil Liberties Union lawsuit about houseless people on public lands and being able to offer services and instead of not doing sweeps, but doing an outreach and going and providing outreach for these people where they have a place to go. And you know, it's this, it's a fine line. Because we do also have to maintain these facilities to be safe for our families and our children. And when our parks and rector actors are coming to me saying, I'm not sure what to do, but I know this person has scabies and they're taking a shower in our public restrooms in the sinks. And our kids are going in there. How do we navigate this? And so it's kind of a returning to which in a healthy community, humans recognize that nobody is really more important than anybody else. And if our behavior is causing a potential harm or threat to someone else, then we need to rectify that behavior and we need to you know, make some changes. So let's see, we've got traffic, our roads are we're at capacity. We've come back from COVID and we're at capacity. Our schools are at capacity. Um, you know, we have some issues with water. And so it's just a really pivotal time to to potentially pause, look at where we've come from and where we want to go.
Yeah, I might like to ask a follow up question in regard to the sweeps. It's my understanding that there are a number of sweeps being conducted in the Kona area. And it, you know, it seems like there should be an alternate solution. And I guess my question is, can you come up with an alternate solution? And what happens to those people after these sweeps are conducted? Where do they go?
Sure. First off, I would go ahead and humbly change the word from sweep to outreach. Because what happens is for one to two weeks before they go out and like say, okay, we have places for you to go. You don't have to go there, but you cannot stay here. And so they go out for weeks prior and usually there's already relationships established with the people. I'm not sure if you're familiar with, but there was a, it became a very large kind of compound on the beach at Holly Holavi Beach Park. And it was very dangerous, unfortunately, and I, a number of emails and phone calls and whatnot. But they went out for two weeks prior and got to know each of the people there and their specific circumstances. What did they need in order to help them get back on their feet? Was it was a driver's license so that you could fly on a plane to go home? Is this you need housing for you and your partner and your dog? Okay, and finding them specifically what they need. And a number of them, I wanted to say at least half took the services. Being, living in the capacity that many of these people are living in is life threatening and dangerous. It's not actually that compassionate to leave them in these circumstances. The amount of rape and physical abuse, psychological abuse, theft, it's it's mind blowing. And so providing them with opportunities of places to go is what was done beforehand. And then those that had at that time, when they said, okay, we're gonna come back on this day. And you don't have to, I mean, it's up to you if you don't want to accept the services being offered, but you cannot stay here. You just can't stay here. And so many of them took the services. Others decide not to. And unfortunately, they move to another location, which then if it's not in a park, and it's on private property, sometimes it's in other areas that then gets followed up on. But the hope in my heart is that with continued follow up and authentic outreach, people will eventually say yes. Because they're not living in a healthy ecosystem and environment. And it is incredibly challenging and stressful. And you know, it's it's hard because the village is my home. And the fact that people tell me they can't walk down Ali'i Drive or they can't walk in a certain area because of some of the activities that are happening there that tend to be connected to some of the the creatively arranged housing accommodations. So this is a, you know, what I do also tell people is this is not a, an issue unique to Kona. This is not because Kona has been naughty or the leadership, you know, or our businesses or anybody has like, we're like this horrible community. This is an island wide, statewide, national and global issue that is related to an imbalance of socioeconomic distribution of resources that goes deep and beyond. So how we empathetically, but also with with a firm, I think, belief system about our community and and the value systems of our community to participate.
Thank you. Kanani?
Um, mahalo, thank you. Talking about affordable housing, you know, there's new regulations are in the works currently at both the state and county levels, attempting to change short term rentals. What are your views on short term rentals legislations?
Well, I'm not sure if you saw today's paper, but I am quoted about what we currently have coming forth from this council. Two of the council members have brought forth Bill 121, 122, and 123. I was also in office when Bill 108 came forth through Karen Eoff, which was kind of the first attempt to realign and reestablish some boundaries and parameters for unfortunately, what had become a free for all for people buying homes in residential areas and turning them into short term vacation rentals, which directly affected our real estate prices. Because once you could rent a home at 500, you know, minimum a night and make $10,000 a month, you change the value of the home, whether or not you're going to resell or rent it. And so it changed a lot of the experiences in that capacity. I have great empathy for and great respect for and also honor the tradition of having somebody rent a room in your house or rent an ohana in your house when traveling nationally or internationally. It's been done throughout Europe for years and all over the world. And there is a value to having a kamaaina experience when staying with somebody. But unfortunately, things have tipped so far the other way that one of the pieces of legislation that we did just pass is that for all of the affordable housing in the works being built through county funding on the island and state and federal, because it's always a collaborative priority will be given to local residents already living on the Big Island. I know there's some state legislation that was presented to not basically not rent or not sell to Malahini, unfortunately, or fortunately. The constitution has some, you know, there's some serious legal potential battles that would be on the forefront for something like that. But I think we found a way, at least in this one piece of legislation, by prioritizing our local people. We're able to give them precedence in what's being built and created here. Let's see, what was the other part of the question? Short term vacation rentals. Well, I was quoted in today's paper talking about Bill 121, 122, and 123 that I I have concerns because I feel like it's such a complex piece of legislation that it's overreaching at this point. And it has freaked so many people out that they've been whipped, unfortunately, by those spreading misinformation also into a frenzy. What I would have liked to have seen first is allocation of funding and resources for the effective and authentic enforcement of the short term vacation rental legislation that already passed. Because in my experience, and I think I may have the largest population of short term vacation rentals in District Seven, is people were upset with the lack of enforcement for what was already on the books. And so that's my, we need to enforce what we already had there. I saw you, Jeff. Thanks. I saw my little hand. Oops.
Tanya, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm trying to decide if I should ask a follow up question or just move along. Maybe if we have time, I'll ask a follow up question. I'm curious who you're like, who's endorsed you up to this point? And who are your major contributors, just so we can, and our listeners can get a gauge for the type of money that's funding your campaign?
Okay, um, my last campaign, I had the opportunity to run unopposed. So I did not solicit any contributions or donations. Um, my prior campaign, if you guys had watched that, a super PAC endorsed my the person running against me and put, I think, $150,000. I proceeded to garner mostly $10, $100 contributions. I did do a fundraiser through the Fair Wind and was able to raise some funds there. I have been offered the opportunity to do another fundraiser with the Fair Wind. My most recent contributions were through somebody that I met at the Hawaii State Association of Counties, and it was through Turo, which I thought was interesting. I didn't have any real red flags as far as Turo's concerned. I know a lot of local people that were able to create their own income stream through operating Turo when we were in COVID. And so that felt Kono to me. And other than that, I have not, somebody told me recently in a meeting when I was expressing some anxiety and concerns, well, go out and raise a whole bunch of money. Go get all that money and just send that message. And to me and my heart, I'm like, I really don't want to have to have a lot of money spent on a campaign. I mean, this is my original sign, the first one that was made for me. When I first decided to run for office and I've got yard signs and banners, but I I anticipate still running a grassroots campaign. I have not, we haven't, June 4th is the deadline for filing. And so the endorsements I've had in the past, or the fire department, or showbo, or Sierra Club were I blocked it out. But I was very grateful for a long, a 360, Climate 360, a, a number of, they tend to be more environmental, social and cultural organizations. And while I did interview for some of the union, OHGEA, which I was also grateful for. I was unendorsed by the ILWU right before my the second campaign election, because I refused to support Huhonua, Honua Ola, whatever they're going by now. So yeah, it's been an interesting. Once again, I'll go back to the statement I made in the beginning. I don't want the job more than I want to do what I believe will be the right thing to do. I go back to a, a quote, he ike ana i i Kapuna, to see the right thing to do and do it. I get very frustrated in council at times when there's a lot of squabbling over the I's or the T's or the syntax or the this or the that. And and maybe it's just who I am, but I'm like, but the purpose of the legislation is for this to move forward. And and that's where I return to my core values and and vision for for where we need to move as a community, because we're at a tipping point.
Thank you. Kanani, our next question?
Mahalo, Rebecca. Um, so you know, there's many issues in the community and environmental controversies arising with major concerns about Hawaiian culture and values. What approaches would you take to address these as an elected official?
Meeting with the people. I, um, you know, I saw on the list of some of the issues here, one of them was, you know, DHHL blood quantum reduction. Yeah, I'm born and raised, I'm fifth generation here in the islands, but I'm Caucasian. And I'm here because my great, great, great grandparents were colonizers. And so part of my reason for serving is restitution in its own odd way and gratitude for even being able to be born and raised here. So how do I support the continued regeneration of our host culture and its wisdom? And the people and the language and the arts and the practices that are pivotal to our future generations having a grounded understanding of who they are and where they're from and why they matter and how they belong. And so to me, you know, one of my first kind of activist opportunities was working with Kohana Ikio. At the time, it was protect Kohana Ikiohana, Uncle, Uncle And if you're familiar with the People's Access Shoreline Hawaii Decision, which basically became part of the inception of environmental law, Hawaiian law. One of the incredible wisdom pieces of wisdom and truths that he shared with with us was that environmentalism is amazing. And I'm so glad it's no longer this fringe, you know, the science behind climate change and whatnot. But the strength comes from the relevance and the living culture we have here in Hawaii. And that that is viable. And there are rights that belong to that, that must be honored. And so I, you know, I humbly would step back and revere to that. And I want to take my guidance from those in those positions of wisdom and leadership, because you know, I had this opportunity in my first term to go to New York for Climate Week and represent the 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 Big Island at the United Nations Climate Week, Climate Strong Islands Dialogue, and the prevalent message through that whole week was that the solutions for the challenges we face as a global society and community reside in the wisdom of our host cultures. And I defer to that. I also respect those of indigenous cultures who are saying, hey, that's not really cool to put this all back on us after you guys have screwed things up so bad for hundreds of years. I I honor that, that as well. So yeah, the double edged sword.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, so on that, so a lot of folks have struggled with the process of the general plan. Um, we've struggled to access the draft, some, some of us, because you needed some special software to comment in the plan. So that was confusing, particularly for Kapuna and marginalized communities. You had to have some kind of technology skills. There wasn't a lot of outreach done by the county at all. And it was also extremely difficult to compare the currently proposed general plan with the previous one, because it was completely gutted and started over. So it was impossible to compare what was changed, which I thought was the actual legal purpose process. So you know, I'm just curious how you feel that this process has gone? And also, do you think, what do you think about the general plan overall?
You don't have to get into it. Yeah, um, I I share the concerns and I've also reached out to April Superknot, who is in charge of long term planning and who has needed to take back the responsibility for the general plan, because Bethany has moved to now be the interim, not director, but basically in charge of the Office of Sustainability, Climate Equity, and Resilience. So in talking to April, I shared with her those concerns. And the concerns about the new kind of platform or way of showing the general plan to people, people didn't get it. And and they want their hand held. I want my hand held, like, I want a meeting and I asked for one, walk me through District Seven specifically. I've asked for the planning department to go back into the public sphere and meet in each district to have an opportunity for people to go and have the conversations and essentially have them walked through all of the changes and everything that pertains to that specific district. So at least in that capacity, they could have an understanding of what's being changed. Thank you. Sorry, I had some questions about new terminology for recreation zone. And what happens in a recreation zone? Does that usurp a resort zone? And as we're looking at all the short term vacation rental potential legislation transition, does that provide loopholes? Does that essentially what I hear loud and clear from our community? essentially what I hear loud and clear from our community is people aren't trusting this right now. People are feeling overwhelmed and insecure and like they don't have a broad enough understanding of it. And throwing something out, as wonderful as technology can be, to like throw something out on the internet, we're not there as a community yet. And people need and want more personal interaction. I am also aware of some potential conflicts that would come forward if the council is told we can't make any significant changes to the general plan when it gets back to us. Um, and there being questions about the legality of that based on the fact that the administration hasn't followed all the rules and laws. So I really feel like it's still um we still have a lot of work to do. And we have a lot of concerns. And by saying we, I mean, this isn't my general plan. This is coming from the Planning Department. And a number of members from the Planning Department, I have a good relationship with. Other people in leadership in the Planning Department. Many of my constituents don't trust. And that poses a challenge, and I haven't been afraid to say it and call it out for what it is, because without it being acknowledged, it can't be resolved. But we have um, we have more work to do. This, this is not a rubber stamp document, and there's too much at stake. Is what I'm seeing, oh, just one more comment, Jeff. What I'm seeing happening is, you know, when my predecessors were in office, it was kind of a belief system that any timing, extension, zoning changes, yada, yada, had to go through a rig- a more rigorous vetting in the Planning Department and then go to the different planning commissions. And what seems to be happening recently is it's not vetted that hard in the pla- you know, we're seeing things come through the Planning Department with a positive recommendation that I'm blown away for. And we don't have a super experienced savvy uh, group of planning commissions right now, um, let alone not at Quorum. And so it's much too easy for them. I get it, you're overwhelmed, you're not sure. It sounds okay. Um, let's go with it. And then things get pushed through, and it used to be a potential assumption that if things got approved by the Planning Director and the Planning Commission, that by the time it got to us, it had been really vetted and the quirks had been worked out and the extra requirements had been put in there. And unfortunately, I don't see that happening now. And hmm, one of the main things I hear them say is, oh, well, it's in accordance with the general plan. And that's not a, that, that's, that doesn't, no.
Right, I mean.
My comment on that is that they have the means to uh allow the communities to participate and participate actively through the CDP Action Committees and those meetings that were held on a regular basis. And yet, for some reason, they've been completely marginalized as well. So I I doubt you can explain that, but I think that's one of the issues, is people don't have a place to go to get this information and discuss it openly.
Right, and for many of us community members, we trust the people on our CDP, you know what I mean? Because there have been people who have been um involved a long time, so you kind of trust that process. So when I noticed that in this general plan process, that there was a lot, this lack of transparency and inclusivity, which included the groups that were, you know, entrusted by the county as well as the p- the districts, the people in the districts themselves. It just kind of sets off a lot of red flags. And so then it makes you really worried. And like you said, and maybe you can just clarify for our listeners, why the general plan, once approved, is so relevant to our planning decisions? Because they do fall back on it and say, well, it's covered in the general plan, it's approved in the general plan.
Totally.
So when we can't go apples to apples, it's really worrisome.
Yes, and the if, eh, you know, in the general plan, it's called urban or um res- you know, um, high-density residential, then they can just say, oh, then that project's okay. We have something coming to us again shortly. But we don't have the infrastructure. All of this has to be tied to the necessary infrastructure. We cannot adding to our already insufficient infrastructure. We're just, it's the definition of insanity, right?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
Kanani?
Well, hello Rebecca. Um. What economic opportunities are you most excited about in Hawaii County right now?
I'm really excited about circular economy. I'm really excited about our local artisans and cultural practitioners. I'm excited, I mean, we just had Mary Monarch. Look at that incredible economically viable voted was it voted the best cultural festival in the country? And that predominantly the resources return to this, like, we're here on the island. I look at um organizations like Reuse Hawaii, who are going into construction sites and harvesting materials and reselling them. I look at uh our sustainable and regenerative agriculture and the number of organizations who have received uh, land grants and financial grants that are allowing for them to perpetuate alohaaina and cultivation of food crops and education amongst um, not just the keiki, but Kapuna. I am excited about um let's say I am I guess sometimes I get kind of cringey. The word economy always makes me feel like it's this push for like linear growth. But when I can transition it to circular economy and condition eh and transition it into how do we utilize the resources we already have here on the island? I get really excited. I am excited for our local businesses like Fairwind, who've transitioned to all big vegan food and everything's biodegradable to um even, you know, my work for years with the Kona Brewing Company, having built a new brewery and made it completely LEED certified and sustainable and water responsible and um byproduct, you know, contributing to our farmers and that we are creating an opportunity for organizations and business people to be successful here. But the model needs to be within a certain framework. And 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 that's, that's just what it needs to be. I think of Mauna Gardens and and their work with cardboard, how we've just transitioned this realm of cardboard being shipped everywhere else. And now it's being recognized as this golden resource to make soil. So um, I look at the economies of scale of diversion from our landfill and how that becomes a market. I look at the economy that's a potential for transitioning our wastewater to R1 water. All of a sudden, water becomes, I mean, we know water is a valuable resource, but it also could have financially um substantial uh gains from reutilizing that water. So in the terminology of economy, um, I I also am grateful for the strides being made to transition our visitor industry from marketing to management of our visitors through education, incorporation, collaboration, and experience gaining um that would provide more authentic benefit to the people that live here, and I think to our visitors, because they would leave with a more um connected understanding of this place, but also to themselves. And perhaps they could go home and become curious about who are the people that inhabited the place that they lived before they lived there.
Right.
Thank you. Tanya, uh, I think this is going to be our last question.
Well, that's good because Rebecca, you answered a lot of questions with that last answer, actually, that we had highlighted to ask you. Um, the one thing I would add actually to your circular economy is our theaters and performing art artists and musicians and there's a, because there's entire businesses that support all of that. And um I just wanted to give the plug for our local artists and performing, mostly performing artists. Um. So I guess my last question's gonna be um what type of co- because I want to build on that whole idea of the ag and the food security that you um just spoke about. It, what kind of county legislation could you support that could contribute to our food sovereignty and food security? Because to me, it feels like, like we're there already, like we need to be growing our own food. Um, I was a recipient of one of those state awards um last year. I got one of those five thousand dollar brands. And I was able to expand my little quarter acre out here in Puna, and now I have chickens and I have, you know, gardens and I can grow food. And so I mean, it makes you feel so good when you know that somehow you have something to trade with other people and that like your family's not going to starve if something happens. And everyone should feel that, who wants to feel that way, who has the space to do something. So how could, what kind of county legislation is is possible?
Okay, I'm gonna just think of a couple of things that I've tried to work on in the last couple of years. Last year, we hosted the Hawaii State Association of Counties Annual Conference. And I got to help put together the forums and one of them, we highlighted local organizations working on food sovereignty and gave them an opportunity to speak in front of um the, a group of county and state uh representatives um and share their successes. We also have the opportunity through contingency relief funds to provide resources to support some of these organizations and the work that they're doing and that the work that they're doing with um our community and through educational models. I think of La Iopua. And I think of the work done there. I know one of their big projects they're bringing forth uh, next is helping families to make their own drying boxes for fish. Um, and any other, you know, uh, resources they'd want to dry. They helped them um uh, they're helping with cooking, how to cook local food with our young people. So when it comes to specific legislation from a county standpoint, yeah, that can be a little bit tricky. But when it comes to um putting forth resolutions that support state legislation, for me, it's about relationship building, right? For me, it's about really getting in there with the people doing the work with Chantel at Mauna. You know, the magic she's done there. And at one point, the shredder died. Wait, let's get you another shredder. Like being there and being a conduit with whatever resources and connections to um the different departments in our uh administration by getting the resources necessary to support the people. So um yeah, I mean, I get really overwhelmed sometimes and feel um insufficient as I think any one of us can at this time when the issues are so broad. And then I recently spoke at the Sustainability Summit on solid waste, some of those things, and talking about the plastics legislation. We're still almost there on, but I had to remember how far we've come. We've come so far from the time when I was a child speaking at Land Use Commission hearings because they wanted to build three hotels and blow up the reef ecosystem in front of Kohaniki to build ho- to build. Um, like, I don't see that happening now. And at a time when native Hawaiians weren't on the land, weren't, the language was, was almost being lost. Cultural practices were scarce. I mean, Miley, one of my predecessors, didn't even go by her name Miley as a child because the Hawaiian language had been that oppressed. And here we are now, and we're not just the weirdos having conversations about environmental and sustainable issues. It is science, it is fact, it is in every major news source. Culture is alive and thriving and inspiring. Our children speak Olelo. Uh, generations do now, the cultural practice. I mean, when I, eh, it's something that gives me hope of how far we have come and why it's so vital to remain at the table and to continue to speak truth to power and to humbly challenge status quo and to keep pushing the envelopes and the needles and the everythings towards practices and connections and relationships that will provide for a healthier, safer place for my Maupuna to grow up in a Hawaii that is similar in the good ways and different in the bad. Because we are the most priceless place on the planet. And we have the opportunity to continue to eh, to return and regenerate and revise and realign and remember and recalibrate. And I humbly ask uh for the endorsement of Huli PAC for Rebecca to serve District Seven.
That was really good.
Well, thank you Rebecca for joining us tonight. We absolutely appreciate it.
It's a privilege and an honor.
And uh, thank you Tanya and Kanani for uh participating as interviewers. Um, I uh, or we at Huli PAC, one thing we'd like to really encourage everybody to do is to vote. And uh, it's so important. Get involved. That's the first step to getting involved. Ask your friends and family to vote. Discuss who you're voting for and what the reasons are. And uh it's a community effort and we can get some really good people into office. Things can change. At Huli PAC, we're building something that Hawaii has never seen before. A slate of pono leaders for um uh you know, i- it's just, yeah, we have to, we have to turn things around. There's just no two ways about it. And if you'd like to get more information, then please log into our website, hulihi.com, that's H U L I hi H I dot com. Thanks very much and have a great evening.
Aloha, everyone. Thank you.